Okay, Mr. Murray? Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Edith Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Kazooka's absent? And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Public comment? Point one?
Yesterday... Yesterday I got an email. Not surprised if you get a lot of emails, too many. I found out with a little research, I got the same email the week before. I'm just not sure how much I pay attention to a lot of emails I get. It was called "The Weekly Parent Report." And it told me how often my daughter was on the internet, how many pages she'd known lots about her data. Which is very interesting, but I think we missed weeks even for the school. I took the email, I guess, but the administration missed opportunity to let the parents know what this was.
No, I can address that right now, Ms. Stringer. That was just the trial run to make sure that everything was kinked and worked out. Actually, Mr. Bell has been with the... Talking with the media and everything together to will make a formal announcement of that. We had to upload addresses before we could even really test it. And so, parents did get that email and know we didn't announce it beforehand. We're just trying to get it worked. So, we will be informing parents what that... And it's just another tool that lets you know...
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is letting the parents know what this tool can help them with. And I have to admit, as a parent, I'd also like to know how does the school use it? Or they do?
Yeah, we've always had that tool. We can always say where...
Well, that's what I understand.
Where a child is wanting.
Now, this is March fifteenth. And we start school in September.
Mm-hmm.
So, I was kind of curious why we, you know... That's what I'm getting at, partially, six months later, this comes.
Because it just now became available to us. We got the email, Mr. Bell, what, two or three weeks ago?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That particular part... That particular part of the email that you got just become available to us. We actually worked on it the next day after we got the email.
Yep.
And the first week, you got an empty email. That's the first week we got it and actually worked on it. And this next week, I think you got two empty emails the first time. But anyway, this next one, we think we've got it going now. And yes, we're going to do a media blitz or whatever you want to call that to let everyone know about that.
Okay, good.
Did you register, Mr. Ringen?
Yeah, I registered.
Yeah, so there's one email you got yesterday.
As far as I know...
Well, you would actually have to make an account. Because when you make an account, you can log in during the day.
My wife did that.
Okay.
She had to use my email because that's the one they have.
Yeah, so you don't have to wait for the weekly summary. So, you could log in anytime.
But, and that of course comes because we're all using Chrome workbooks, which I think is great, you know, the way that's working. But that brings up the other part that I wanted to talk. Because I understand that when we got those in the fall, we're going to return them back here with the school year, is that correct?
We're still working through the plan for that. Mr. Bell and I actually talked a little bit about that last week.
Yeah, one of my questions is, we picked them up and they were all by several numbers who had them. If we turn them in, I'd like us to get the same one back.
That is our pure intention to... Except for the seniors, they'll be wiping clean and probably recycling them back at the lower grade and then push back up. But it's every...
I'm sure they'll approve that part, too.
Our intent is for every child that had that front book, they'll have their next... the same front book back. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But if you've not logged in too, you said your wife had. It's amazing. I looked at Cody's today. It's amazing. Shows me every page that he's went to.
Well, the problem is, it has to be somebody who's intelligent to log in and figure out what's there. So, that's my wife.
Well, I don't believe... Well, I mean, she is that person, but you are too.
Anyone else? Lake County Regional College and Workforce Center Construction update.
Board members, they've got some pictures and stuff to show, so if you all care...
I gave everybody a copy of... written copy of that. I don't want to go through it line by line. Y'all can look over it, but just want to show some pictures of some items. Most of them are interiors. You could... if you've been by, not while the exterior has changed a little bit, just a few odds and ends that we will cover. But the outside of the building is looking pretty good. We won't be long, we'll be wrapped up on the exterior of the building. That is a shot of the interior staircase going up to the student collaboration areas. You can see the... you can see the stainless steel handrails and all of that's went in the last little bit. And under that stairwell, you see, that's the change order that y'all approved in a previous board meeting. There's the storage space under that stairwell. So, you've got all that storage space in there now that you can utilize that would have been just a helping space before. There's another shot of the finished handrail. You can see those are real nice, clean, neat handrails going up. All aluminum, nice finish on the handrails. You can see the painting around the risers of the stairs. Getting painted, a lot of finished paint going on. In that photo, too, you can see a lot of the lighting that's in. The lights are supposed to be like that. Kevin designed it that way. They're supposed to be that way. So, but there's a lot of nice lighting in there. It's lit up really well. Of course, you put a lot of natural light coming into that space also.
Now, on that guardrail that he showed that photo of, and he shows up in this photo as well. That's an aircraft cable type guardrail. If you look at that, you don't see the walls on the bars. It gives you a lot of transparency, it opens. So, it lets the light pass through, a bunch more transparent. More of a technical, more of a occasional look.
This is the upstairs area of second floor student collaboration. You can see the... there in the photo, the two... The two drywall areas here, that's where the two images... Two of the images will be placed that you will see, that you all have seen. I don't know which ones... you know which ones which?
The one going towards the bottom there would be the robotic arms. If you've seen those images, those are the part of the actual images that have the robotic arms going down to the lower level. And the one up above there, that one happens to be the medical. If I remember correctly, that's the medical one.
We wanted the robotic one because it does the maintenance and cat handling, it's downstairs, so we thought that would be the...
And then there's another image later on that will show it, I'm sure. The other image shows on the other side, which is the structural bridge.
This is a shot inside of one of the finished classrooms. You see the tiles down. This floor actually has wax already on it. All we like now is just basing that area. See the ceilings in, lights are in, marker board, tack boards are hung. A lot of the inside, the second floor. We're working our way out of the second floor to the first floor to finish. So, the second floor is wrapping up. And then we'll finish out the first floor and go out the doors. This is the electrical shop area. You can see, you know, you have some accent paint colors on the wall. You can see that's done. See the lightings went in in this space. The only thing we like on the second floor is putting less cover cement on the concrete floors. Hopefully, a lot of those areas will be done this week. So, a lot of the upstairs, second floor area floors will be wrapped up by the end of this week. This is the... you can see the handrail, the guard fence rail that's went in on that upper level. This is the dust collection system outside of the carpet bridge shop area. You can see parts of the tape off. But all of this guardrail fence is in, the fencing's on it, like it's in the front.
Now, there's also a vehicle guardrail that goes out. If you drove by, you see the vehicle guardrail being installed in front. That also goes out, the vehicle guardrail goes out on the backside and that service shows what...
They started on it yesterday. They're working away from the front around the rear. This is one of the rolling gates. This is at the rear. You can see the greenhouse in the rear of this photo. But this is one of those rolling gates there at the rear. There's one at the lower level I'll show you here in just a minute. But that area will be fenced off where it can be shut off or if you put a lot of that after balance.
Jonathan points that brick enclosure here in the back of the building. That brick enclosure that he's pointing to there, I want to point that out. That's a very, very, very neat system. That's what houses all of the tanks of gas for the welding and the settling and torches and so forth. Those are individual tanks out there. They have to be inside a contained room. In the old days, if you remember, when you go into welding lab, you'd have these big parts with tanks on them. Nowadays, all of that gas is piped in, so the tanks remain outside. So, you know, I've got a kid knocking the tank open. It's all enclosed, there's manifolds out there. That's an exciting system. A lot of you probably don't even know it's there, but it's all in the back room behind the building.
This is another one of the finished classrooms. You can see the lockers there, they're all living style. One of those accent walls. And you've got the marker boards, tack boards, floors are in. I'd say all they like is basing a lot of those rooms. This is the medical classroom. You can see that casework is went in. They were finishing... this area's got the floors finished now. But you can see there, the head units that has the electrical and everything. This is where your hospital bed will sit. You can see on the ceiling, the curtain tracks in. So, it'll have a curtain that'll pull around it, just like a hospital. So, they will... it'll basically be just like they're in a hospital setting, in a hospital room. They'll have their casework, everyone's got a seat, plumbing everything to it right there. Plus, they've got their marker boards, tack boards right up in that space, too.
Now, the headwinds themselves also have compressed air. So, when you're dealing with oxygen asks and so forth like that, there's some airflow in there, kind of giving more of a realistic approach. Also in this space that you don't see in the photographs is a nurses station. So, you're going to walk into this space and it's going to look like an ER or an actual nurses station, an ICU, or regular hospital room. So, they've got a place that they can do data input. If they want to log, it teaches them some more of the logging and some more of the clerical requirements for a nurse. They'll have that ability to log into a computer there and do that same type of thing.
Did I get this picture to...
Good.
I heard about the man that was in that unit there. Come on over. That's the center of mine, look like the wall there. Is the wall separated up there? It don't give me no separated joints up there.
Or at the...
Right about the center of that unit there. That mine up there, right there, that's it. That mine looks like it's going to separate the wall right down to the...
Now, there's... there are masonry control joints in those long run masonry walls. Do you have a wall structure?
We're getting at the locking step. There are too many... like, too many blocks put together, like I said, the walls are...
That's a control joint.
That's a control joint. What they do is they stop and run to the wall right there. And they put a joint in, a three inch joint for reinforcement. Goes through the wall. But then they put a compressible ceiling gas to inside there, a compressible rod. And then they also cock that joint. Reason for that is, we run a straight, long masonry wall. Over time, that wall will move and crack in this area. So, what we've got exactly, a control joint, but we call it an expansion joint.
Yeah, I was going to say that. I didn't want to hear that, but that's what it is, yeah.
And you'll see a lot of those in the building.
Yeah. I've seen it before, so you know, it's a good opportunity to ask.
Yes, I'm glad you're here.
This is the health science room. You can see the floor boxes. That's where your data, electric, everything will be for the desk for the kids that's in that area. See the marker boards, tack boards in that area. Those will have cover plates on them where the desk is at, where they can plug in below them. This is going into the existing school. That's that ramp and stairs going into the existing school. You can see the handrail is up on it. You've got steps on one side and then the ramp going in just below the ax shop existing now. That's going into the existing high school. There you can see a lot of that lighting. You can see that this is that second floor student collaboration area. See all the windows, the natural light that lets in. Really unique space, well lit, probably used quite a bit. That space will be. Kevin talked about the other drywall areas. You can see on the other side. You can see where these other images will be mounted. This is that genius bar. There'll be a countertop on it where students can either stand or sit to use computer, do homework, collaboration, that kind of stuff in that area. Those have tile on both sides of that. Then there will be a top that comes off of that. This is the second floor lobby. You can see the glass goes all the way up. And that lighting there inside that lobby. You can see this same handrail that goes around that. That's open below that all the way to second floor. So, that lets light all the way up from first and second floor in that lobby space there, at office. This is the door that was up going out of the canopy towards the existing high school. You can see that's the office space there on that second floor. And that leads out of that canopy, heading up the sidewalk to the front of the existing high school.
John, do you want to know about those lights that are caught? The ones that are not set, they have the... the lights of all of them shining there?
Yes, yes.
So, the problem with the rest of them is just the...
This is the IT classroom. You can see those brackets on the wall there. There's countertop that goes on this here. That's where students will work inside the IT space. And this is that space that all the ceilings open, so they can... It's like a real work experience, running, wiring, cabling inside of a building, just like they were working. So, all of this space has that open area where students can access things above ceiling and work just like they were on the job site. This is the carpenter classroom. This is pretty much a finished base, except for the base again. This tile's been laid, it's been waxed, ceilings are in, marker board, tack boards up. All we need in this space is base down, it's ready for desk and chair. So, a lot of those second floor classrooms are nearing completion. And one thing that we always do, that Larry and Keith will start doing is... And if you're over there, and of course, contractors know this, but when we finish the space, we lock the doors and put a sign on the door that you don't get in there unless you ask Larry and Keith. And we don't let anybody in there because that cuts down on punch lists that Kevin then has to do. And people's not tracking through these classrooms whenever we wax it forward and finish them in those spaces. So, you may see, if you're over there from time to time, if you see a room locked up, a sign on it, that's why that is. Because when we finish them, we don't want anybody in there until we turn it over to you all the other.
The contract law for two dozen of glass, so they... They're... they're... But we want that whole more focused before we can put in the product and equipment to any of the rooms. So, I've already been told on maintenance, so I'm trying to add in for determining the progress of the whole process.
And I will say this, too. You can understand that those codes are not the old mikes we used to use. Everybody's going to wait for that to go to acrylic finish. It doesn't have to be stripped every single year. So, you're creating wear layers that will only have to be stripped. Every school district does a cycle, so I'm trying to save some maintenance.
These are a couple of photos that maybe you don't see a lot of, but I just wanted to highlight these because these guys have worked hard on this. There is miles and miles of condo and stuff in this building. And these mechanical rooms are... I mean, I don't know if you've been in them, but there is...
We're not going to get in one tonight.
They're... for that reason, we're getting them done.
They look really good.
We... these spaces, they're clean, they're neat. You can see all the condo in this space. Everything is strapped to the wall, it's clean, it's neat. But there are... this is the brains of your building. This is all the panel boards, switch gear and everything in the mechanical room. But they put a lot of work in these rooms and they look really good. This is another mechanical room. You can see the piping that runs this building. There are miles and miles of piping. Everything from twelve, sixteen inch piping all the way down. So, these mechanical rooms are a critical part of your building. They've really taken the time to make these function really well. This is auto mechanics. You can see the two big reels up in the ceiling. Those are the hose reels, the exhaust hose reels. So, when they pull vehicles in there and they work on them, they're running, they can attach to... those reels come down and they attach them to the exhaust of the vehicles so they can work on them in there with the doors closed. But those have been mounted in the auto mechanics area. You can see that's auto mechanics, too. You can see those are the big overhead doors that go in and out of that space that allow them to play a room, bring cars and whatever else inside of auto mechanics. And all of these spaces like that, first and second floor, have these overhead doors to be able to bring material in and out of easily accessible. That's the lower level, looking back up towards the upper level. That's that big open space just outside of auto loading. You can see another one of those gates are set. And then there's fencing that goes up either side of that. It's not been installed yet, but the gate is hung. And this is just an overall inside of that area. You can see all the space out... This is just outside of auto mechanics. All the space they have to store stuff outside to be able to keep it behind the fence and block gates there in auto mechanics. You can see another overhead door going in there to the auto mechanic shop space. So, a lot of usable space outside of the building that they didn't have before. And that's all the photos I have. Any questions for anybody? I talked to Larry today, the middle of the month. If it works out for April is when we're planning on trying to have a temporary CEO for this building. So, we're in the... we're in the short run of this thing. I mean, I know y'all got a lot of equipment to move in and we're going to start coordinating that here in just the next few days. But we're working our way out of this thing from the second floors. Pretty well completed. Working our way down to the first floor, working our way out the door.
I got a sheet named five hundred, I'm sure, middle of January, start of January. Middle June, middle of June, then that should be here. And they were... they were having a place in there.
Any other questions? Good, thank y'all.
Are you still... I'll ask you, but who all these... You are, are you all ready?
I can study for this.
It sounds like we have to jump a little backwards.
Yeah, I'll study. I'm okay.
I know you wanted to not have a carry, you just wanted to send it to them. Yes, Mr. Ringen?
First of all, I want to say, all that wiring, the tube, everything makes me remember when I used to ship. We had a whole lot less room to run it all.
Oh, I bet.
Just something else that you've handled before. What's the anticipated student signs in there? And is there a limit on the number of high school kids that also be going into classes or what is that?
Yeah, every... and I can't give you the number right now. It's really a lot of stuff to prepare. Every program area has a cap of a number with the statement that the students can participate in that particular program for safety reasons, a lot of different things. But we'll have, I think it's like five hundred something students come through that building. More than that, though, because the first period class, we bring eighth grade. And so, they get to experience that, they get really excited about it. And we're going to continue that for next year.
Will you be reminded by the eighth grade group and showing them different things they could say?
They take a rotational class. They gets exposed to like the four different programs. And we didn't have to... pure tent, uh, just to get them excited about that. I'm telling you, though, if I said... I told the board members, I've taken pictures. If I was a student, I'd run it to get over there every day to get in class.
Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition. And that's Tori Era.
Mr. Williams here is not to present that to Ms. Tori.
I was very pleased with Brooke asking to fill in for her tonight when I saw who we were going to recognize. She's been teaching fifteen years. She teaches all grades at Russell Springs Elementary. She's taught kindergarten, kindergarten just start, kindergarten readiness. She's one of those teachers. Doesn't matter what she asks for a teach, she teaches. That's one thing I love about her. She started out mid-year, got her grad scholars in P-5 Elementary in Western Kentucky. She got her masters in rank one in elementary ed. And she said, "What do you like best about teaching?" "I truly love the kids and how excited they get when they have accomplished a new task. I love watching them grow each year as a student. I also enjoy collaborating with our classroom teachers to find programs that help reinforce what the students are learning in the classroom." Can we have more of that? I love to cook and spend as much time as I can with my family. I currently direct all the children's programs in our church. And our favorite quote, "I don't necessarily have a favorite quote, but I do have a favorite scripture. Helps me get through many things. Philippians 4:13, 'I can do all things through Christ which strengthens me.'" Tori has had a lot of adversity, a lot of adversity this last year. And I'm always so proud of her. She's done such an excellent job and it makes me very proud to present her with this.
Ms. Tori, anything you want to say? I put you on the spot with your wife.
I appreciate it. And I love... I just... I love what y'all are doing with the technical center. I see it every day with Jason's job.
Absolutely.
We need more of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're going to lose, we're running out of basic areas. But I love my job as a school district.
Thank you, Ms. Tori.
One of my favorite teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Tori.
With ostrich sail.
Oh, I thought you meant Tori had you in class.
Ah, of course.
Hi, Mr. Ford. She has his door for starting.
Oh, that's what it is, that's what it's all about. Have his door.
Uh, consent agenda?
There we have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, construction funds report, school activity fund report, financial report of the February twenty twenty-one, treasurer's monthly report. Ms. Carnes is going to present at this time.
Treasurer's report for the month of February twenty twenty-one. Balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $7,164,035.2. Total of all receipts, or total of all receipts for the month, Total of the receipts and beginning balance, $9,529,110.4. Disbursements for the month were $2,277,875.14, bringing our balance to the close of the month. The $7,251,234.90. In fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, $7,939,862.88. In special projects, Fund Two, $226,588.43. In district activity fund, Fund Twenty-One, $3,784.90. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, $135,000. Capital outlay, fund three-ten, one hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars even. F S P K Building Fund, fund three-twenty, four hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and fifty cents. Construction, fund three-sixty, negative one million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Debt service, fund four hundred, zero dollars. Food service, fund fifty-one, eighty thousand, one dollar and seven cents. fiduciary fund, fund seven thousand, three thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents, bringing the total cash in bank for all the funds to seven million, two hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety cents.
I recently sent you all an email I received from the, that's Special Workforce Department Cabinet, blessing, for lack of a better term, all of the funds that we had submitted for our construction management at that time, on that email, I told you now, that while we enter, we'll be getting back on that. We've got our first one that's been submitted for the process for reimbursement funds for that construction plan, so.
Okay, we need a motion.
I want a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I notice that Ms. Carnes reached an awful lot smoother than I do? I didn't want like you to feel like.
I think she's done it.
Uh, Mr. Murray? Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Segalbom?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo, absent? And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Change order proposal request by Commonwealth Regional College and Workforce Center and brick payers.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Chief, you all can chime in anytime, but the first one is a change, is a change order. The, the concrete circle out here can hold approximately how they would be laying one thousand, eight hundred eighty bricks around now, it's just kind of voided and it's, it's grounded. What they're intending that is, is twofold. Uh, one is aesthetic, just for the decorative part of it, to put the brick payers and Ms. Roy and I looked at three different choices of colors that we would make. Uh, but it costs to put them in there. One of their machinery, one of their new machines that they'll be getting can do the engraving for us. So, you know, we would, we would hope that community members, past people that's been to have school there, they'll purchase a brick and have three different colors and then we would offer three different levels of pricing. So I just threw this out here as a real simple example of what it could mean for the school as far as getting supplies for the classes and everything like that. If we just kept an even price and sold Michael Ford a brick and he had his name on it, whatever, for fifty dollars, at that number of brick payers, that would be ninety-four thousand dollars. But what oftentimes what entities do is between the three different colors, it's three different levels of brick. So I just picked a random fifty and called it a fact. It does cost to do this. Uh, we need to do something with the, with the, with the area anyway to, to, to dress it up and there is a lot of labor involved in placing the brick and fixing it all. So this change order, including the brick with the labor, is fifteen thousand, six hundred fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents. But I think the potential it has, uh, that I know it has for the students over there because they can sell that and then turn it into their Skills USA Club and for, for their trips, for competitions, to buy equipment, to buy supplies. We all know what things cost in the classrooms and Ms. Roy's program gets limited money uh, from the state. But that could be a huge investment that we could make now as part of the construction cost that the students in turn will benefit greatly. And in turn, I think it's gonna be really cool, this community will, and no doubt, we'd love to purchase a brick and have their money for their trade, their business, whatever listed on there, and it's gonna be really neat that our students can have the machinery to do that. Mr. Smith, Mr. Chief, anything you all can add, if you want. Or not?
So the, the money, the pay rate, will it not be restricted then? It will just?
It will be our fundraising money for the, for the, for the, either the club, travel, things like that, or for their supplies for the school. At the A T C, yes, not, not for, yeah, for the kids of A T C, those programs.
Well, one of the things I've, I've been really excited about, whole monument in the center.
Oh, I did.
You know, we've always talked about the bridging of regular curriculum in high school over to the career center. How can we make those groups spin around even more? So imagine if you've got a, A one welding labor, a welding plant. Now your art students can collaborate with the welding students, collaborate some structural folks and machine, we talked about that's new, the arts project as a whole, to create possibly a revolving type art display out of the center of that monument. That is gonna be set up, made for goals, so that they can be a standardized way to set and mount those art pieces, so that you can have that throughout the years, change, maybe even sell the artwork for donation. So when they wanna put it out in the backyard, where they can throw their business.
And they're four lives, that's already part of the contract that are in there. And they can, they can afford to do that.
So it will be outside of the monument?
Yes. So when you drive by and you're gonna see this wonderful lit up monument that will have artwork that will be, could be a student, that history could be some other, out there. And I really think it's an opportunity. You don't see that kind of showcasing of a joint project between a rotational college for reading spec program and a standard art figure, and engineer group and so forth, you might have another license.
So we aim it on there, it's nice, whatever that comes to fruition, we can change it. I like how they incorporated that. And then the payers, uh, struck strategically placed around it with the colors with your all's approval, but.
I thought it'd be Rosie the Riveter.
Well, that would be. Rosie the Riveter. Originally it calls for, uh, Philly concrete, Kevin Johnson? Yeah.
Yes, yes, concrete.
The, the monument part is already part of it, uh, because the concrete says.
It's not where we sell.
Pardon?
The, the monument part, it's, it's just there, it ain't gonna be.
Well, it's something that we can interchange and so they brainstorm some ideas, like maybe the senior class might come up with something and they do it, and then it's auctioned off or something, then the next class does something. So a lot of the, a lot of the, that I have is, and shared across the project. So I recommend that the proposal request number twenty for the Commonwealth Regional College and Workforce Center be approved as presented and authorized in the superintendent for myself to, to complete the necessary paperwork.
How many questions is that?
I'll say.
Uh, Mr. Murray? Uh, Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Segalbom?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo, absent? And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
I understand, uh, Mr. Murray, but, but it will be there for years. Yeah, we don't have to do all of that this.
BG one, add exterior freezer at Russell Springs Elementary School.
Okay, and this obviously upfront, this may include some things that doesn't have to, I had, just to be honest, I've not got some answers back from the state with me and I've worked with, uh, Mr. Smith, Mr. Chief, um, to, to get this BG one proposal put together. But Russell Springs Elementary School, really the, the school food nutrition program is the district as a whole, is running out of space and especially the way we're giving away the food on Fridays now and storing it, uh, they just really, they, they don't have room to store things and it's so hard on the cooks to move things around. Mr. Emerson and I met at there at Russell Springs, uh, a month or so ago, with a freezer rep, with the, with the gentleman. But they don't have room, we can't take away the room from inside, and so just as restaurants do and everything else, this is an exterior freezer that would be added on to the backside of Russell Springs Elementary School. So I got with our consultant at the State Department, he said, yeah, you have to do BG one for that, uh, so we have to get it approved from the state. So Kentucky Department of Education, getting your all's approval, it would go to the legislature approval and then come back on us to action, to, to put it in action. We are proposing that we use the stimulus money fund so it's not impacting the general fund, uh, because it is dealing with the food service and how we're providing food for the families during this time. It is a total cost right now estimated at sixty-one thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. And let's talk about those, what makes up that, that amount. Um, the, the freezer itself is twenty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars and nine cents, and it's pretty much turnkey. They will come in, the company will put that, uh, put that freezer there, our maintenance department will do the electrical, electrical part of it. And we could kind of leave it in there, um, outside, and we still have that some G C work, it has to be on a pad. So right now, uh, here's the loading dock, Russell Springs Elementary School, obviously can't put a freezer down here, they build a pad on, on the, uh, concrete. Russell Springs is, is a relatively new school considering age, um, it's a very nice school. I would prefer that you all approve us, uh, breaking that freezer. Number one, it's gonna protect the freezer, but number two, there's a whole lot of people that sees the back of that freezer. I included the picture in your all's packet, if you had time to review that, of what the freezer looks like. But if we took a, a, a brick screen wall around it, frame that up, and part of the cost of the breakdown is included with breaking that, uh, that freezer. And then, um, architectural feet, because you're actually building there, adding on to the feet, and the dim overs are privacy walls that has to be taken down there on Russell Springs as well. But it's not as simple as, I'd like to say we could just buy a freezer and put it in, but it's not that simple, uh, and they have the racks to deal with it. Mr. Smith, Mr. Chief, anything?
I mean, that'd be more of a finished look on the back.
It will.
Uh, the building, I mean, obviously you're adding on, but it would look like, you know, it's intended to be there, not just a freezer added on to the back of the building, leaning on the side of the.
Looks like it's been there all along.
What's that?
Looks like it's been there all along, huh?
Yes. And there were probably a little degradation brick color because I used, but it would at least look more finished on the exterior.
I recommend approval of BG one for the new exterior freezer at Russell Springs Elementary School and authorized in the superintendent for completing the necessary paperwork, which was the first step to be taking the minutes from tonight's meeting and taking that BG one and submitting it to the Kentucky Department of Education.
I want a motion to approve the added freezer at Russell Springs Elementary School, BG one.
Yes. That's on the BG one, uh, with the S R two funds, that's noted as standard, yes.
I'll say.
I don't know, I'll extend the response.
Yeah, it's not using general fund dollars, it's probably used a state response. Uh, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Segalbom?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo, he's absent? And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Letter of intent, guaranteed energy savings contract.
If you all remember back at the January school board meeting, before we had a reel in the second regular January board meeting, we had the working meeting upstairs above the pool with representatives of C E T A, I know Representative Branks from there and Sherman Carter Barton as well. This is the first step to finalize that process. We're not obligated to anything, but before we can move forward on this guaranteed energy savings part of, uh, uh, contract, we, the board has to approve this and then I submit it to the Kentucky Department of Education and then in turn, as noted on the letter, they have to send back, uh, the, uh, the guidelines and the check list and the guidance documents for us to, to begin the work. They will come back ultimately with an actual contract before any work or any obligation that the board is put to. So I can't emphasize that enough tonight, this does not obligate us to anything beyond just the preliminary work. But we cannot get the funding that we want on the guaranteed energy savings contract, uh, just from the work of the middle school alone. We'll save a lot of energy, the work we're gonna do, but with that, uh, that scope of work needs to include our other buildings. It needs to include this building that we're in, and we talked about what they can do for the pool, uh, L E D lighting, Russell Springs, sale objects, and all those other entities, we need to capture all that. So I recommend that this letter of intent for guaranteed energy savings contract be sent to the Kentucky Department of Education. I don't want you all having to take advantage of that.
And this is gonna allow you to do more of a middle school project by using this energy savings contract.
And again, they have to guarantee what we save from utility bill, that they're gonna be monitoring, is pay for that portion of that bond for all the utility work. And if they, if it, what's so neat about it, if it doesn't, then they're obligated to make a difference.
We can, we can.
Yeah, it's, it's been successful in other school districts.
We've done several projects, hybrid projects in the district, where it hasn't been extremely successful.
War down the utilization, a lot of things, yes. But again, we're not obligated to this point. I'm sorry?
Uh, I've heard a question, have, have you all been trying to include what said? I mean, I mean, you're like, I like, you know, I've tried to like, we have, turned that in the road.
So, uh, part of, uh, part of the program is just that, and Kevin Johnson, do you want to go on, again, we, of course, some of our building, the H vac systems are old and we do not have the controls. On our high school, that you all redone the, of the qualifications, we can control that building, we can set the set points, it can't go below this number, it can't go above this number, we can, we can override it, we can do all those things. The, uh, other schools don't have the control. So part of this, uh, is a monitoring process that they do as well. So they keep on top of our energy usage average, really, and, and the monitoring of it.
The temperature, the, the temperature, the temperature change, you have to monitor the mix. Are we talking just always up and down right there?
That's an option. See, there's nothing being presented for your all's approvals.
What, what they do is, is they are very, very good kind of nutties across the state, that they are very, very detailed in their analysis of your buildings and weather patterns and the usage of your buildings. What you're agreed to tonight is nothing more than lying before the start process. They will come back, every time this is done, and do a very detailed explanation for you in the board members, to answer such questions as, okay, how did you account for a potential worst case scenario in the weather journey? Okay, we may have had more heat from us. What they do is, is they do this to a level of detail that is even part of the latter that good video, because as they said earlier, Mr. Ford said, is if they miss, and you don't save a certain amount of money, it's guaranteed that, if they, let's say they guarantee you're gonna save five hundred thousand dollars, and right off the bat, they find out that you didn't save five hundred thousand, and it's metered agreements, it's not just a guess, they look at the meter, say you're gonna use this much, you're projecting that you're gonna use this much, and that difference, they will write the district a check to pay for that difference.
That's, Mr. Murray, that's what I like so much about, as I told you all before, I've met with other companies before that offer performance solutions and, and different energy savings. But what's neat, uh, unique to C M T A Energy Solutions is it's, they base theirs on actual data and our utility bills each month, not the projections of what they think it should be or shouldn't be, it's the actual data. So when it comes down to that and we're, you know, if you all approve a contract of that, all of that is stipulated, but that's what's really impressed me with, uh, C M T A, and school districts have came back to them. So they did a project, it worked really well, it's continued to work well, they do another project with them. And repeat customers, I think, is, you know, that always speaks well too.
This is more cautious, like you said, the next saving's happening, that, if, if that kind of company, that figured, a million dollar job, they can consider that.
I'm just going to number out, they know the number. I think, I think what the consideration is, is they put that in the city, there's a potential here, very conservative, but they're out, also they don't wanna get themselves to be writing checks ever. And Mr. Ford said, oh, if this is done, this, and I've said it before, he's just like, you're leaving, and I, when I first started this, I was very simple, I'll be honest with you. And I've said it enough, more meetings, so they come in and these energy savings companies will come in and they are giving their presentation, and I'm hearing the district say, well, we save not only enough to pay our bond, but we also have money going back into our account because they predicted, they're, they were saving more than the earnings this day. So they also decide that we may get more money out of what they guarantee you, but the reality is, is none of this happens until they can do their work and figure out what the real numbers are.
But you know, everyone in all of this, they stay up every, every major, they're getting paid, they're not caring for nothing.
That's right.
In other words, we're gonna fake enough on our way, we'll pay for it, it's all of this, paying them for doing it, it's for you.
Over the life of the bond.
Over the life of the bond?
Yep.
Over the life of the bond? And that's, it'd be a big bond.
Excuse me? It'd be a long time bond. Did that be a long time bond?
Well, that's a twenty year bond, it's like everything else, it's a T D bond.
So instead of us just paying for it all out of bond eventual and for, as far as like taxpayers, it's a less of that part of the bond because we're saving the money that we would be paying to utilities is going to pay this bond. So as far as like taxpayer perspective, uh, it's hard to not rationalize that part, you know, have to appreciate that part.
We have to pay that too.
Yeah. But, uh, I have, I've met with two or three different companies over the course of the years. And, uh, you know, you all have never seen, I've never felt comfortable bringing a proposal to you all until I sat down and, and really talked with and worked with CMTA Energy Solutions. And it's been, uh, it wasn't the first time deal either. I mean, I've talked to them several different times before we ever came to this step, uh, at the January meeting when they, when they met with you all. But again, of all the junior's court, uh, even, of course, for certainly for approval tonight for this, but there's no obligation with this tonight. Uh, you know, just literally, this is just permission for me to send this letter.
I just can't say, say work there.
Will we cut this in the book?
I would suggest certainly at this point for us to, if they move forward, see what they can come back and give you the actual proposal. Yeah. Because we're not obligated to anything. We're not out money right now, that come in and do all this and get, bring it, bring it back to you.
Well, I make a motion we can help deliver the G1 energy savings contract. I'll say it.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
I'm, yes, I don't, I don't appreciate it, I'm waiting.
I understand. Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabom?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook is absent and Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. I was, well, Mr. Ford, I had my wonders about, you know, how this would work and all. But right now, we're just saying that, okay, go ahead and try to, you know, go to the state and, and get their permission and, and then we come back and they'll give us a proposal. And we can either say yes or no.
Thank you.
Okay. Memorandum of understanding.
The Russell County School District and the Casey County School District, of course, we both transport students to the Kentucky School for the Deaf located in Dambol. Of course, you all know this as well as I do, to go from Russell County to Dambol, in fact, to Casey County. And they have reached out to us and asked about, this is common among school districts, about if we would pick up their two children or some students, two students that they have to go to Kentucky School for the Deaf. And in turn, they would pay for half of our driver and half of the lawn. So, uh, it kind of took both, we're already going to the Kentucky School for the Deaf and I'm happy to, uh, reach out and count out neighboring school district. And at the same time, they will cut our, uh, cut our salary costs, yeah. And, um, and we do not, we don't go on Monday because our student has some other things going on on Monday. So they'll transport him on Monday, they didn't say, well, consider all or nothing. They were just happy with whatever we can provide. I think it's a win-win for both of our districts. It certainly cuts down on our, uh, personnel cost.
I'll just do it.
Yep. It is. I recommend that the memorandum of understanding with Casey County Schools be approved as presented. And this, uh, was developed by their board, board attorney, Ms. Winter Huff. And I've already sent it to Mr. Hough for a pitch review before putting it before that.
I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Casey County Schools.
Okay.
About state there.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabom?
Yes.
Mr. President Johnson and Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Out of state and over, and or overnight trips.
The following groups have received approval from the superintendent for the following overnighting our, our out of state trips. And this is both for the Russell County High School baseball team, April the fifth of the night, um, from Purdue to Kentucky, that turns free break for a tournament and April twenty-third, thank you all. April twenty-third to the twenty-fourth, uh, for Harrison County. Uh, had a phone conference today with, uh, our club director, Mr. Carpenter, and, uh, our head coach, Retro, just going over some safety protocol for COVID, even down to the number of students that's going to be in the rooms, to how Coach Retro is going to allow the students to, uh, together, uh, to the number of students on the buses and, and everything in between. So I appreciate them being, uh, proactive and thinking about things and working to get safe. We kind of held on to this a little bit and know how things would be, but I feel, uh, I feel comfortable and I know the students and families really look forward to this, this opportunity. So I recommend approval of the overnight trips and, uh, as presented for the baseball team.
Make a motion to approve that full document. There's now, well, it's not on state, but it's on.
Yeah.
In state, sure.
Who says that?
I don't know, it says that, it's, it's supposed to be in or, yes.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Mr. Murray? Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabom?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes. Fundraiser?
The following group has received approval from the superintendent for the listed fundraiser, James Jones Elementary School is going to sell grade level T-shirts, March the twenty-second, July twenty-second. Uh, recommend approval of the school management fundraiser.
I make a motion to approve the fundraiser for James Jones Elementary School, T-shirts.
I'll say that.
Okay.
He's on.
I got the same.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seigabom?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
And before I forget, we are so excited about our boys bowling team heading to state competition. Yeah, I heard about that after the fact. And our boys and girls baseball, basketball starting history tournament tonight in Cumberland County. And we play, we're a few people looking forward to their action. We will have a bowling team here at a future date we recognize coming across the state. They are, they're an exceptional. I talked to Coach Retro today, he's one, excited, proud coach.
That's all, folks.
Waiting for Reagan.
I'm here mostly here.
Second? All the neighbor?
Yes.
Yes.